Okay, well, it looks like we've got everybody here. So, wanted to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting for Wednesday, July 22nd. I'm just gonna do a quick introduction since it's not our normally scheduled meeting, just to let you guys know what to expect. So, first if we can do a roll call. Councilmember Delacan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Kirby.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor Stillman. Here. Thank you. So, first of all, I want to thank everyone for joining us for our city's first town hall meeting. Some of the issues that we're going to be discussing are sensitive topics, so just wanted to ask all of the attendees just to be kind and respectful of the other attendees who are also here sharing their time and their thoughts. The main focus of tonight's meeting is for the city to do a short presentation about the Kattati Police Department. And then we have scheduled about an hour period of time to listen to concerns and suggestions from the Kattati citizens. The main goal of tonight's meeting is to listen to our citizens and then take notes for issues to address at a future meeting. So, this is not the one and only meeting we're gonna have on this topic, so don't be concerned if we don't get to everything right away. The first item on the agenda is for public comment, but I want to assure you, we will also reopen public comments again, as we always do during our special meetings, for further comment throughout the presentation. So, just wanted to let you know, it's not your one and only time to speak. If time allows, we will also reopen public comment at the end of the meeting. The goal is really to hear from everyone who wishes to speak at least once tonight. Also, if anybody is uncomfortable speaking at this meeting, also note that there's the option to submit any of your comments in writing to our city clerk, and then that will be distributed to all of us. And with that, I will open it up for public comments and ask those curators to see if we have any attendees who would like to speak at this time. Thank you, Mayor Stillman. For our attendees tonight, to make a public comment, use the raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial *9 if you are using gesture telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number, and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. And we'll start with Marjorie Crupshires.
On last Friday, July 17th, this country lost two icons. Reverend C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis both spent their lives fighting for civil and human rights. But my focus this evening will be on John Lewis. Mr. Lewis was born in Alabama to parents who were sharecroppers and to whom little in life came easily. As a youngster, Lewis knew he wanted to be a minister, and one of his favorite stories to tell was, "He needed to be ready with sermons and speaking skills, so he would talk to the chickens as he went out to feed them on his family's plot." Practice is sermonizing. Mr. Lewis grew up, went to college, and then attended the National Baptist Theological School in Nashville, Tennessee, where he met five people with whom he went on to start the Southern Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, or SNCC. At the early age of 23, John Lewis was one of the architects of the lauded and laudable 1963 March on Washington. As SNCC grew, John Lewis became an active member participating in freedom rides, sit-ins, and marches. He sustained unimaginable assaults to his person and demotions, including a cracked skull, but he never gave up. He is often called one of the most courageous persons the civil rights movement ever produced. John Lewis dedicated his life to protecting human rights, securing civil liberties, and building what he calls "The Beloved Community in America." From 1986, grew earlier this year, John Lewis represented Georgia's 5th Congressional or Congressional District. His congressional colleagues called him "The Conscience of Congress." His was a life of giving and forgiving. His fight was for all people: black, brown, LGBTQ, immigrants, the poor, whites. In honor of this titan of a man, let us all pledge to follow his lead and the sermon he spent a lifetime preaching. When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have a moral obligation to do something, to say something. To employ a favorite phrase of his, we have to quote, "Create righteous good trouble for its change." Rest in power, John Lewis. Rest in power. Thank you.
Dustin Di Matteo.
Hi there. My name is Dustin Di Matteo. I'm the executive director of Farmster over at the Veranda Fletti Ranch, right across the street from City Hall, as well as the Farm and Horticulture Project Coordinator for the San Francisco Conservation Corps. And, you know, my public comment is, you know, a potential program model to consider for the city of Kattati, as well as our wonderful Police Department of Kattati as well. Last year, I was recruited to lead young people of color and disadvantaged communities, primarily on the low and very low economic scale, out in the San Francisco and San Bruno, as well as San Mateo areas, to basically take these young people out to a farm facility located at the San Francisco County Jail, Number 5, where they have some facilities, a lot of open land, and plenty of space to work together. And we actually utilize, as one of our primary funders, the Sheriff's Office, many of their staff members, deputies, to come out and work with our young people who are primarily targeted and affected by a lot of this racial bias and some police brutality, both at protests and riots, and not just part of the racist systemic problem we have in this country. And over the last two years, we just finished our second six-week summer program where we bring 16- and 17-year-olds specifically out to this site and do this work. And part of who we serve, the 18- through 25-year-olds, just the nature of what we do with Conservation Corps is job training. And some of the shorthanded benefits, I see the time going quickly here, are we get to have conversations between, you know, this police force out there in these, you know, targeted communities. It does lead to some employment opportunities in law enforcement for these young people. Obviously, there's a lot of farm education that goes on, and there are opportunities and career pathways that open up there. But one of the things we're gonna celebrate tomorrow is the fact that we can learn from each other, both from a generational gap perspective, you know, some of those racial biases come out in soft skills development and structured facilitated activities. But, you know, I see a coffee with a cop program that, once again, our wonderful Police Department offers, and would just like to extend our neighboring farm there as a platform as construction will soon end this month, to hopefully maybe start to get some folks that stop by and ask how they can get involved to meet out there for some volunteer projects that then maybe our police force would and staff would be interested in getting involved in. So, just wanna extend that, all of the branch, share that program model. And then very quickly, if the city and Police Department are interested in offering more surveillance cameras, I think that would help with oversight in some of the issues that may come up. Thank you.
Adrian Lobby.
Page Street in the Red Hills Complex. I want to thank Marjorie Crupshires for her beautiful and eloquent comment about John Lewis. Marjorie is a treasure. She is a... I didn't ask for permission, so I'm gonna be... She had a career that was very successful, and now she's a professional actress, and we should note some of the amazing people that live in our community. She is one of them. And I want to say personally how much I've been influenced by black and brown people in my life. As much as I've been able to become a community activist and learn my own, how to be assertive of my own opinions, a lot of that is due to the amazing courageous forerunners and ancestors in the black and brown communities, and I just want to say thank you.
Mayor Stillman, that will be it for public comment at this time. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And so, we'll move on now to a short presentation. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt. I just had a late hand. Oh, sure. No, I'll go ahead and pause. Thank you. Thank you, sorry about that. Shigene Matna, go ahead. It looks like he's still muted, Lauren.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Shigene Matna, and I want to thank City Council for kind of organizing this opportunity. I had the opportunity, along with some other members of Kattati Against Racism, to sit down digitally speaking with Chief Parish to kind of get a sense of what was going on in Kattati, his perspectives and philosophies, and kind of what the Kattati Police Department was facing. And during that conversation, Chief Parish stated that, you know, there was an increased hostility towards CPD, particularly in the downtown area, and, you know, also indicated that the department currently has quite the exceptional workload due to the size and scope of the department. You know, we have 12 officers working full-time, seven days a week, 365, doing an incredible amount of work. And it just seems like, you know, Kattati police are being asked to do quite a lot for the community, but it also seems that certain resources, like having an enhanced ID department, which seems to hinder the implementation of the new RIPA policies, or somewhat new RIPA policies, right, have kind of affected the workload. And so, during this conversation, we asked Chief Parish how he'd feel about Citizens' Oversight Committee, and, you know, he stated that he was not opposed to the idea. So, I hope that at some time in the very near future, that City Council and Kattati Police Department, or Chief Parish, consider re-establishing the Citizen Oversight Committee that, you know, was originally created in the 1970s, but for some reason was disbanded in the 90s. I feel that such a committee can help, you know, amplify the good that CPD does, and also kind of serve as a liaison to field concerns and questions from the community, which, you know, can definitely be discussed at a later time with the Kattati police. And I feel that, you know, this could potentially free up more of that essential time for CPD to continue serving the community, you know, establishing more presence on the beats, what have you. I just feel that Kattati has an opportunity right now to create a cooperative public safety program that has both the community and the police working side by side and not simply ongoing conversations like this, but actually have something systemically implemented. And I feel that Kattati can set an example for the rest of Sonoma County, as we have time and time again. I appreciate you hearing me out, and that's all for now.
Will Proudy, go ahead.
Hi, sorry for the late hand. This is Will Proudy. I'm a Kattati resident and member of Kattati Organized Against Racism. I want to thank you guys for holding this meeting today, and thanks, Chief Parish, for addressing the use of force policies in his Where We Stand statement. That statement indicates that Kattati PD policy is in line with the A-CAM framework in almost all areas. I kind of take a different view on that as a community member. I think the Where We Stand statement kind of attempts to mollify the concerns about use of force policy, but it doesn't really embody the progressive spirit of the A-CAM weight policies. I think having our policy drafted by LexiPaul, an outside company that seeks to minimize litigation and save money, is not really gonna reflect our values as a community. I do understand the advantages of using LexiPaul, because making a completely custom policy would be burdensome. It keeps us abreast with current Kate's law on a state and federal level. But however, I feel like these policies use vague language, such as objectively reasonable feasibility and reasonable belief, which are written into a lot of our police use-of-force policies. I think these are intentionally vague legal devices used to attack lawsuits. Some examples would be the requirement of de-escalation. I know CPD has de-escalation training, but nowhere is it mentioned in our manual to require the use of de-escalation tactics. Requirements to warn before firing a weapon and exhausting all alternatives before resorting to deadly force. Use objective reasonableness and reasonable belief. I don't think our policies can ever be in line with our progressive values as a community as long as we rely on LexiPaul solely. I think policies that place the highest value on safety of residents and officers should be prioritized over saving money. Community input should be valued in the attempt to make CPD into the most progressive and least violent department it could possibly be. Please consider adopting a working group of residents, city government, legal scholars, and police to craft policies that reflect our community values and truly protect and serve. Thank you.
Mayor Stillman, that'll be it for public comment at this time. Okay, thank you. So, I think first I'll turn then to see if anybody on the council is wanting to make a comment at this point, or if you wanted to wait till after the Police Department's presentation. Okay. So, let's move on. I'll turn it over to Chief Parish, I believe, is gonna be doing the presentation. Is that correct? Chief Parish, thank you.
Yes, it will be me, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, and everybody from the public who's joined our town hall meeting. Bear with me for a moment, I'm gonna work with our clerk, make sure I can take over the PowerPoint. Let me take a minute here.
Lauren, I'm on the View Options drop-down box. And I see if the...
Go ahead. Do you see where you can add to control?
So, show any controls.
I sent you control, if you can accept it. It should have popped up. If not, I can roll through the presentation for you, if you want to just let me know.
Well, I see it says I have an option to give up for all control, which means I may have it, but it's not working.
Oh, there you are. You got it. Go on.
You have it. Okay. Sorry about that delay, but I do have control of the PowerPoint, and so I will begin my presentation. Again, good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Parish, I'm the Chief of Police for the city of Kattati. I wondered if you have a brief biography of me, probably not too long and too boring, but I think it's important to share. Because I've been doing this a long time, this means law enforcement, since 1986, so I've been doing this for 34 years. I also have a police lieutenant who's second-in-command here, and she's like at 35, 36 years of service. He was formerly a sheriff's captain. So, I wanted to share that with you, that the people running this organization, the two top here, people have 70 years combined of law enforcement experience. So, I started my career at the Mersey County Sheriff's Department, again, in 1986, as a reserve deputy sheriff. Had a great career there, I was there almost 20 years. I had a lot of special assignment, too many to go into tonight. One of my... One thing I like to point out when I was at the Sheriff's Office, the special assignment that I was in for about three years, it was a Bala grant, it was a federal grant, Violence Against Women Act grant. And I investigated, I was a detective, assigned to all the counties, the metric violence cases, for, like I said, about three years. I learned a lot there. I worked with victim advocates and built relationships. I worked with victim advocates and built relationships, which led to me being on the Woman's Place Executive Board. So the Woman's Place Executive Board was our victim advocate agency, and I actually ended up being the president of the board of the Woman's Place. That was one of my big accomplishments when I was at the sheriff's office. When I started as deputy sheriff, I had a high school diploma, I wanted to improve my education, and I did want to promote, I did want to be a law enforcement manager, I knew that young. So I attended Merced College, Merced Community College, I got my AA degree there, and then I continued on to Spanish Rock State University, which is in Turlock, it's a CSU system. And I obtained my Bachelor of Works degree in criminal justice from the CSU system. When I was at the sheriff's office, I had an opportunity to attend the FBI National Academy. So only one percent, or less than one percent of law enforcement, attend the National FBI Academy. So this was created in nineteen thirty-five by J. Edgar Hoover, and it's a command college hosted by the FBI for local law enforcement. It's also accredited through the University of Virginia. So I flew out to Quantico, Virginia, at the FBI Academy, I was there about three months. What the Command Academy is, is a college. And as I obtained my four-year degree before going to FBI Academy, I completed graduate work. And began with a credit, credit divided at the University of Virginia. So after spending a great career at the sheriff's office, they built the University of California Merced, about, it's a couple of miles from my home. And so I applied to be the second-in-command of the University of California Merced Police Department. And this was a police department that did not exist. We, the university wasn't open for students yet, this was brand-new. They hired the captain from UC Davis as the police chief, and that Chief of Police hired me as second-in-command, and together, we built the University of California Merced Police Department. We hired everybody, we bought the police cars, all the equipment, got the office set up, got all the computers we needed, hired all the personnel, which included police officers and dispatchers and support staff. So it was, there was a lot of heavy lifting when I was there. I shared that I, the reason I shared that I did graduate work at the FBI Academy is because when I was at the university, I continued my education and used some of the units from Quantico, and I obtained my master's degree in emergency services administration. So that's what my master's degree in. And then I left the university in two thousand and eleven and became the police chief here in Katari, January of two thousand and eleven. So I don't know where the timeline, I've been here nine and a half years. And so that's me in a nutshell. So moving on to just our operation here at the police department, we're twelve point five sworn personnel. So the point five is a reserve officer, that's what that is. So there's a chief, lieutenant, two sergeants, and corporals, and then the rest are officers. So that's just the sworn personnel. And yes, we provide twenty-four-seven coverage, we're always here, no matter what, and I always try to have two officers on duty at all times, because if you only have one, and we make an arrest, or have to place somebody on no help hold, the metric violence response takes a long time, and you have to have two officers respond to these, because they're dangerous. That's why I always have a minimum of two officers on. Plus, when you arrest somebody, now the officer is driving to Santa Rosa, where the jail's at, that takes time, so we're down to just one officer in the city. And also, some people need to be medically cleared before they're booked, so it's up to the jail staff to receive a inmate, and so if they have some significant health issues, they may make the officer clear them at a hospital. And so officers can be out of the city for hours sometimes. So again, it's just important that we have more than one officer on at all times. Body cameras, so for transparency, we were by far the first law enforcement agency in Sonoma County that actually fully deployed body worn cameras through all of our officers. It holds officers accountable, it also holds people that officers approach accountable. And I do want to share that once the officer docks with the body cam, that video goes to the cloud, and so we have no control of that, there's no change in video, it can't be edited, it's stored in the cloud, and it's available for pretty much indefinitely. We started at first, where we would delete it after a year, and then something would happen a year later, and we'd have to try to go back, and it was timed out by then, so we just definitely keep all of our video in the cloud. So recruitment and screening, and I'm talking mainly police personnel at this point, but I do, I do participate in the collection of our police officers. I'm not the first interview panel. It starts with the sergeants and corporals interviewing police officer candidates, and then if they're moved forward, if they pass the forward, then the candidates meet with me and my lieutenant, before moving anyone forward. I do want to point out that I've hired a lot of reserves over the years, and I try to hire our full-time officers out of our reserve pool, because I know what I'm getting, I know that product, so if I have outstanding reserve, I'm going to hire that person instead of somebody I do not know. And again, in nineteen eighty-six, I started as a reserve myself, and was hired full-time ultimately. So our background investigator, this gentleman's a retired police detective lieutenant, which is a pretty cool title. That means this gentleman was a, this gentleman worked for a pretty large city in this area, and he was assigned as a detective lieutenant, so he was investigating. Now certified private investigator, and he's a professional background investigator. And police backgrounds are very different than civilian backgrounds, so post mandates that the, our background investigators have to go, actually to officers' homes, look at their home, look at their spouse, their family, and they even have to contact neighbors, that's part of the process, post mandate, make sure that this person's even a good neighbor. And any transcript from education, police academy, all that, they have to be sealed by the college, and then forwarded to the background investigator to make sure that the education is legitimate, and so people can't just turn over transcripts. The psychological examinations, these occur in Santa Rosa, Dr. Clemente is a certified California Public Safety Psychologist. This is a mandate, this is a post mandate for police officers to be psychologically screened, and sometimes people don't make it, because for whatever reason, the clinical psychologist may think that they have a bad temper, or maybe they have violent propensity, and so hopefully people are screened out at that time. And then, so if people don't meet our standards during, the FTO is the Field Training Officer Program, and the CTO is the Communications Officer Training, that's our dispatchers, if people don't meet our standards during the training period, they're dismissed. So if they're out there on the street, and they're just not, they don't know how to deal with people, because one of your police officers, you gotta, gotta be able to de-escalate people that are angry, you gotta understand that people may be angry, but not necessarily angry at you, and it takes a special person to do this job, and so if they can't do it, they're just not going to last. So training, so police officers standard in training, that's the post word I keep using, there's a California Post Commission, that it's oversight by actually the governor and the state. In California, our academy is up to six months long now. California has the highest police training standards in the United States. Like, California police officers are lateral to Wyoming, I don't want to pick it on Wyoming, but Idaho, wherever, they're so well beyond trained, those other states that just got months and months more training. So we go above and beyond here, so we have additional training for Katari police officers. Council's aware of this crisis intervention training, this is mentioned in the past. So all of our officers and all of our dispatchers will have a thirty-two-hour crisis intervention training. When I say will have, so what's going on is, is that's a retirement, where these people already had this training, and then we have some new personnel that haven't had this training yet, a little difficult to make happen during COVID time, because it can't happen on Zoom. This crisis intervention training is a thirty-two-hour course, it's scenario-based, we've got role players that come in, that, you know, mimic being in a mental health crisis, you have autistic people come in and talk to the officers and dispatchers. And the industry standard of having all officers, this thirty-two-hour crisis training, that isn't the industry standard, that's the Katari standard, and then above and beyond that, by sending all the dispatchers, that's even well beyond it. The industry standard, that's my goal, is to get all of them through that. Then in September, there are six of our officers, so twelve sworn, so half of us are going to go to de-escalation training in September, that's an eight-hour course, and that training is specifically timed for this climate, because I know de-escalation is important. And this is a recent event, this training is offered, and I'm sending six, I wish I could send more, next, I'll try to send the rest of the six the next time, but I can't have every one of them. But we're doing six. And then last year, all command and supervisory staff, including me, we attended a force training, it's team training, and what that is, is just the dynamics of use of force, de-escalation, and I wanted all of our supervisors to have that knowledge. So at the bottom of the slide there, you see the no-shoot training. So, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to train police officers on the range or in training that you always shoot, right? So on our firearms range, with the static target, we have also like no-shoot targets, so shoot, don't shoot targets, so again, you're not always conditioned to shoot. In addition to that, we have access to the Police Academy in Windsor, we have a force option simulator, and that is, that's a video screen, and officers have a replica firearm, replica container, and they're ran through scenarios. And these scenarios, some are, some are you have to use force, some you don't. You gotta talk, de-escalate some, you have to use force, because there'll be an immediate threat. It's just important, again, to have no-shoot scenario. So annual evaluations, I talked about the FTO program, so if somebody makes, if you make, you survive the Field Training Officer Program, that's not everybody does it, and you, and you complete your probationary period, you're still evaluated annually by the department. So all police officers, I mean basically all employees, receive an annual evaluation, and if there's, if there's issues with that officer, we'll try to address those and memorialize those in evaluation, and to remind them that whoever's negative behavior needs to change or improve. And they're also reminded that if they don't stop, that if they don't correct their poor behavior, that they could be voted reprimanded or dismissed. And then misconduct, obviously misconduct can lead to termination. And severe misconduct would be a IA investigation, and we would follow the police officer's bill of rights, and if somebody is engaged in misconduct, I will act accordingly. So on the agenda package, there's more details on the police officer standard of training and additional training for police officers. If you, you may have reviewed that already, but it's on the website. So as far as community engagement goes, I think we're doing, I think we get an A here, that's just me, I know I'm the chief, but I think we've gotten an A. I think we've, in the last three, four years, we've really upped our game. So if you're not, if you're not aware of your, of your E or area of responsibility, what that is, is it's on the agenda package, you can see the map, and the website has our map, but if you're a Katari resident or Katari business owner, you, you are in a certain E, we call it an area of responsibility. And you have a police officer assigned to you, and you can reach out to that police officer through email, phone, if you have questions. This is not for emergencies, but this is if you have a question about the police department or about something going on in where you live or work, reach out, we encourage you to reach out to your officer. You may have found on your car a key card, meaning on your automobile in front of your house, if you left it unlocked, you may have a key card from the police officer to survey. Found your car unlocked, or the window was down, I took care of it, and we just let you know that we were there. You also, if your car is locked and everything is locked down, you might get a card to survey, congratulations, you checked your home and everything was locked and secured, you know, you didn't leave anything visible in your car, stolen, and it's a cattle wag or a pardon. Destin mentioned Coffee with a Cop, we have done this in every coffee shop inside, we've done this at Allers Market, Railway Cafe, Sweet Expectations. I did speak to, this is pre-COVID, I did speak to Destin about doing a Coffee with a Cop at Forester, I do want to do that, Destin. And so I hope you would come to a Coffee with a Cop and join us someday. And then HOA meetings, so me and the city manager, Damian O'Fitt, we've been to all of our, all the HOAs in our city, just to ask questions about, you know, how we, how they think the city's doing, and that's everything with public works for the police department. And so those have been well attended. Then bar meetings, the bar sergeants meet with the bars downtown. There's a lot going on downtown, especially with the crawl, gets busy down there, so we just want to make sure we're communicating with bar owners, expectations, and for them, their expectations of us, and we just want to keep that open dialogue. Thomas Page Academy is our only public school in Katari, K through eight now, and we have a great relationship with them. Our police officers, two years in a row, raised money, provided every student at Thomas Page Academy with their school supplies. Additionally, we do, we do Coco with a Cop with the kids as well, we've done that a couple of years in a row. So we have a really strong relationship with the principal and all the teachers. Social media, we've been killing it lately. Uh, if you follow us on Facebook and Instagram, and um, I know some of you at this meeting do, and I appreciate that. Please follow us, uh, like us on Facebook, if you're not a Facebooker, then follow us on Instagram. And I also want you to sign up for NICSLE. Um, that way you can receive emergency alerts, such as a gas leak in your area, we'll put out a NICSLE text. Please sign up for NICSLE. Uh, National Night Out, we do it the Khatari way, I say that. I know some police agencies, like for example, will, will get, their National Night Out will be hosted by, I've seen it like Target. I'm not picking on Target, but some of them, Target actually runs the National Night Out. It's in a, in a paved parking lot, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel like National Night Out. Khatari Police Department, you know, we use the fog park, we use the green grass as a park, barbecue. We run it ourselves, you know, outsources. And we have a blow-up screen and show a movie. And we got up to four hundred people um, attend National Night Out. I know on the council meeting recently, I invited everybody for an October National Night Out. I just don't know if that's gonna happen. I would, I would hope it would, but start to uh, lose faith that we're gonna be able to have public meetings or public gatherings, I'm sorry, um, even in October. So we'll see. So what if you take our time and visit and all of them, these ones come to mind, um, just covering patrol, um, takes time. And you know, Khatari officers just out there being visible in the patrol cars, um, takes time, the Khatari crawl, as you know, or I hope you know that on Thursday night, uh, the Khatari crawl um, is a pub crawl. And it's, it's huge, it's almost like spring break, um, like spring break every Thursday, Friday, night. So it takes a lot of resources. Uh, we have to have help with ABC, um, Rona Park, Department of Public Safety, SSU helps us. Sometimes the sheriff's office helps us as well. Traffic accidents, you know, those happen, uh, those take a lot of time. And asset balance response takes a lot of time, that's a significant investigation because they're just so dangerous and volatile that you wanna make sure that victims of asset balance um, have the right resources. And they need, they need to, uh, move to protective orders, so we're calling the judge, um, and he'd be arrested. Kids may need to be interviewed, so it's pretty significant. Mental health, same way, um, mental health issues, um, we respond to quite a few of those. Some, some people end up in in a mental health crisis and they get called, it is nine-one-one or a neighbor's call. So it takes a significant amount of resources. Traffic enforcement, we're, you know, we're out there um, writing tickets um, to change people's um, driving behavior, to try to reduce accidents. D I R S, the same, you know, we wanna reduce the risk factors out there on the road. Animal control, you may or may not know, so like the county has animal control, but we're not the county. We do our own here and uh, we like, we like, we do the dog life program. When you find your dogs when they're loose and then beyond that, you know, there's a lot of raccoons, there's bosses, there's a lot going on. A lot of wildlife in Khatari. And then community outreach, um, that takes time. And that's what I'm talking about, the beat and uh, social media, um, takes time. And then investigations, investigations take a lot of time. So for example, the families of the police department, they're like a hundred and eighty sworn, they have protective roles. We're Khatari police officers, they're all detectives. They do all of their investigations, um, and uh, it takes, takes time. So keeping us safe here in Khatari, keeping you safe, um, U I enforcement. Just so you know, last year, we arrested over a hundred drunk drivers. Matter of fact, two of our officers are receiving a, hundreds against drunk driving award for twenty nineteen for that, that year. Area officer patrol, you know, we're watching your neighborhood, downtown and commercial areas, we determine crime. It's like, like, so you know, the current crime right now is catalytic converter theft. Going on, not just in Khatari, but all over um, California. And uh, I saw in the media that Sacramento Deputy Sheriff's threw the search warrant. And recovered two thousand catalytic converters at one place. Our, our shared dispatch services, so if you don't know, Khatari Police Department dispatches Sedoma State University Police Department right here from the Khatari Police Building. Do that for a lot of reasons. I have, I have better response to critical incident, that's true. Additionally, it's just better governance, fiscal governance. So before, SSUPD had a standalone dispatch, Khatari did, it didn't make sense that we're a mile apart, have two public safety answering points. We take all of SSU nine-one-ones, um, take all of their just business phones to their police department, get rolled to us. And as far as response to critical incidents, I mean, we all, we all know that active shooters happen, the S U's match for example. So like Sedoma State ever had a active shooter response, Khatari police officers and Sedoma State University police officers, we're all on the same channel at the same time. So those nine-one-one calls, we come into our dispatch, we would all um, have immediate radio communications and be able to respond to critical incidents while fishing. Asset balance response, um, we go to these quite a bit. Gotta have two officers responding to it. Just a must for, for the safety of the officers and the safety of family, with me, you're just in a volatile situation. Same thing with mental health crisis, two officers respond, just to better de-escalate whatever's going on with this person in cruising crisis. I'm gonna talk about mobile support teams a little bit more. But when somebody's in a mental health crisis, you gotta have sworn officers respond to that. Mental health workers cannot safely go to a home when somebody's in a mental health crisis. Again, the crawl, um, on the Khatari crawl, we, we assign up to four Khatari officers to that. And then additionally, we may even um, have ABC, AT this down there, or Rona Park Police Officers when it gets super big down there, because it happens. So our partners in public safety, so police mutual aid, so here, here in Sedoma County or any county in California, we rely on mutual aid. And people rely on us for mutual aid. So during the twenty seventeen fires, um, in Santa Rosa and around Santa Rosa, that night, our Khatari police officers made emergency evacuations that night. Um, beyond that, the sheriff's office, for this fire, it's, you know, as you know, this fire went on for days. The sheriff's dispatchers were just burning out and they called for help. So Khatari police officers were actually working out at the sheriff's office, helping the sheriffs out um, during that time. So now if we have something significant here, we can ask the sheriff to facilitate mutual aid, for example. I'm sure you're aware that the community Khatari doesn't have a fire department. We have, we're in a fire district, residential building fire district, um, which we have a great relationship. The, the police department and firefighters, we're out there together, we have a strong relationship. District Attorney's Office here, obviously they prosecute our crimes, but they, they provide um, help with our investigations. It's like, um, what's needed in the investigation, if things are missing. Beyond that, because again, I'm sure we don't have detectives, if we have like significant events such as a homicide, um, they will come out and assist us as well with the investigation. We already, we already covered the joint dispatch, um, so I'm moving to this tri-community coalition. And so this is hosted by the Sedoma County Health Department. And so Khatari Police Department, um, people from Sedoma State University, not just police, but student housing, victim advocates in Sedoma State. And, and Rona Park Public Safety, we meet once a month and we just talk about youth-related issues and try to curb, you know, drinking and try to have response to, you know, these house parties that happen. And just try to uh, provide resources for young people, newer from not using cigarettes, not using drugs. Um, and this has been going on for quite a few years, um, with Coalition. And I'm, and I'm a member and I'm a contributor in the monthly meeting. Okay, so this is a big ticket item here. This is the Sedoma County Mobile Support Team, call it MFT. They provide on scene mental health, it does these uh, disorders, interventions, individuals experience behavioral health crisis. It's important that they help us with de-escalation. Because if, if they can intervene and give people help, they're, that have, they're going into mental health crisis. Prevent them from going into mental health crisis in the future, then obviously that's, that's less of times where we may have to use force to arrest them and to take them um, on a fifty-one fifty hold because they're, they're dangerous themselves or others. At less than those police contacts, so this is, this is very important. So MFT is set by uh, mental health clinicians, certified professional specialist, postgraduate registered intern, mental health consumers and family members. So they cannot replace law enforcement though. So if they're too dangerous, you know, to these uh, calls for service, they may require in the presence of law enforcement. Even if they're interviewing somebody in crisis mode and ruining the home, they got the officer standing right there at the door. So right now, MFT is available Monday to Friday from one-thirty to eight-thirty P M. Our officers, it's important to point out, our officers love MFT because they're such a help and our officers know that this works. We hope and MFT hopes that someday, um, that we could make this, not Monday to Friday, one-thirty to eight-thirty, but seven days a week, say two to midnight, a bigger window. And that window, that's, that's that later in the day window, that's chosen for a reason. It seems when people are in mental health crisis, pass like two P M a day. And so, you know, you know, police funding has been mentioned in the past, we were doing our budget study session. Money may even be spent by the county by expanding its mobile support. I would really like to see that happen, I think it would help with de-escalation, right, to, you know, it works. So it's just something, you know, for council knowledge and for community knowledge. But this is important and we want to expand. We also partner with Verity, that's our sexual assault and violent advocate. If we have a sexual assault case or we need a advocate to come out for, uh, for the sexually violent victims, the system. Our dispatch calls Verity, they're, they're available twenty-four seven. So Arinda House, so not everybody needs to go to jail, but we follow the law enforcement agencies in Sedoma County, partner with Arinda House. I did not have this option in my city when I worked there, I think this is great. So Arinda House is a place where when people are too intoxicated to care for their own safety. So they could be a passenger in a car hurt that we've come across, or they could just be downtown at the crawl. And they're, they're not being combative, they don't have criminal history. They're just, unfortunately, they got in a position where they're too intoxicated to care for their own safety. Our officers can take individuals to Arinda House. And it's just basically a sobering house. And they will keep them there until they sober up and they will be free to go without being put into the criminal detention. So just some stats, um, even twenty nineteen tonight, uh, twenty twenty, not to get your new stats for the COVID. It's gonna be really wonky to look at twenty twenty down the road. But events, so we'll be, in twenty nineteen, we had sixteen thousand nine hundred events. And when I say events, that's a computer, computer aided dispatch event. That could be a vehicle stop, that could be checking on suspicious person, and that could be a citizen that's calling us, us having to respond. So just about anything, so those are the events. Most, most of the events, as you can see, eleven thousand are officer initiated. That, that's a good time, I mean, your officers are out there on the road, popping cars, talking to people, approaching people. And so that's why they're high. And then calls for service, those events are five thousand eight hundred thirty-eight. Again, mentioned earlier, we had over one hundred D I R S, which for H C, our site, a lot. And then traffic citations, over two thousand in twenty nineteen. That's all the citations anywhere from distracted driving to speed, to um, failing to yield, to pedestrian, to texting and driving, all of it. And so, but we, out of all that, we pulled case numbers on one thousand two hundred fifty-two out of that sixteen thousand, I don't know. That's like the officers had you like write a report on those. And then six hundred fifty-one people were arrested, which could include like, if you didn't go to jail, but if you got fighting or leave. But that only occurs at three point eight five percent of all events. Then on, in the agenda package, there's the, the uniform crime report. If you can see over the years, different crime data that we provide to the FBI, um, from our dispatch center. Okay, so citizens' complaints, those happened, um, they happened less with body worn cameras though. I noticed that when we deployed body worn camera and the media was really looking at it, everybody knew we had a complaint plummeted. So out of all those events, we had, in twenty nineteen, we had four complaints. Three of those were withdrawn. And what happens a lot of times is somebody will come down and wanna view the body camera. This could even be not the person, but it could be like the person's. Son or daughter, for example, they come down and we show them the video and they, they withdraw the complaint. And so out of those four complaints, some people didn't respond, so the lieutenant's follow-up, so he would reach out to them, they gave us a complaint. And they don't respond back. We did have a complaint, it was older than the, we could have went, went off and, and some retrained. So that did happen. And uh, there's a blue form, it's on the agenda package, that's our citizen's complaint form. You can also fill out the form and hang the officer too, those are the forms that do the purposes. So our policy manual, so our LexPro, we do use LexPro's policy, as mentioned in uh, public comment. I think LexPro is great. Uh, this is provided by um, our insurance provider, Reverend Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, that's what Remus is. It's a joint powers authority, there's fifteen cities in, with long agreements. And um, we get the LexPro also for free, not all, we part of get that. So I like, LexPro is continually updated by experts, still to be compliant with all the new state federal laws, as well as any relevant case law, best practices that develop. This, this is a highly active field to best practice, to release policy as written. I do wanna make it clear that um, so I can make a change in LexPro. I wanna point out that Senate Bill two thirty- I wanna point out that Senate Bill two thirty requires use of force policy to be made, have to be available to the public. And so, not only are use of force policies available to the public, our entire policy manual is on the city website. So any changes made in LexPro or tracked in LexPro and require me to republish. So, well, for example, I just removed the carotid pole policy from the manual, because , well, we haven't used it since I've been here, and it was decertified by post, so I removed that policy. So once I removed that policy, I had to republish that and make it available for public view. That's the law. So what I'm getting at is, any change in LexPro, or tracked, web-based, a good analogy is, I told you that there are body worn cameras in the cloud, it can't be manipulated, neither can this policy. And I did not edit the manual, not wordsmith it, I simply removed the carotid restraint bolt from the manual, because I don't wanna wordsmith use of force policy. And another thing is that when we republish changes in the policy manual, our officers have to read and acknowledge changes in our policy. So some of the use of force themes we're talking about, chokeholds, which are, is the carotid pole, carotid artery restraint, again, since January of twenty twenty, it's been removed from the policy manual. The use of force policy by LexPro requires de-escalation, impossible, not always possible to de-escalate. Obviously, we want to warn somebody before the shooting, if possible. Say, if possible, the officer's to get ambushed, there may not be time to provide a warning. And of course, we should exhaust all our alternatives before shooting. And the Puma Code in California says you can only use deadly force in the defense of human life. We also have a duty to intervene, again, if possible. Be close to us and have the opportunity to intervene. The comprehensive reporting, police reports, body worn camera. Again, not, not every agency in California has body worn camera right now, it's not mandated yet. Sure, it will be. No, by having video footage of contacts is important. Great bodily injury or all, or all persons involved shootings are reported to DOJ. When I thought about DOJ, the California Department of Justice, not the federal, but California. We don't wanna shoot at moving vehicles. Unless it's an extreme case, and if you're wondering what I mean, I'm talking about, this would be an event held on the street, streets closed, and somebody, they have mental health issues, trying to run people down, be it terrorism, attempt to run people down, and officers, they have to shoot at the driver of that vehicle to save lives. I know that's an extreme example, but again, LexPro says you can't do it unless it's an extreme case. The use of force continuum, that is, that is an old concept. Use of force continuum, it basically would be, if a suspect had a baseball bat, then maybe you have to immediately go to your taser, not to your firearm. However, the person with the baseball bat is faster than the police officer, and there's not gonna be time to react, they may have to immediately go to a firearm. Again, I mean, I hope that doesn't happen here, but that's what, that's why the force continuum is not used, because a police officer, they have to go to, use of deadly force in immediate circumstances, such as ambush, or adds a weapon, a knife, the suspect doesn't have a firearm, but they have a knife, they're too close to officer, to aid. And there's more detail to that in the agenda packet. Okay, so use of force statistics, so this is, again, twenty nineteen, so I had our, our dispatchers here are also our police records clerks. So I had to do an audit on use of force. And so, what was used in twenty nineteen? When I talk about compliance techniques, that could be, somebody has attacked an officer, and the officer has to physically fight them. That could be somebody resisting arrest, and they're putting them in control, or maybe taking them to the ground. Force happens, that's what I describe as compliance technique. Body wrap, body wrap is just that, it's a, it's a wrap, the vinyl, anchored tight, light that has no growth, and if somebody was like really combative, whether they're in a mental health crisis, it could be high on drugs, just somebody that's being a danger to themselves or the officer, is we will put them in the body wrap. And this, this helps us with reducing injuries to the person in the wrap and to the officers. So we do use the wrap. We do have tasers here, which I like. I think it's better, I notice state officers using tasers as an impact weapon personally. And then obviously, we have firearms. So remember, we had sixteen thousand nine hundred events, I call them, and we did use force, fifty-three times with the audit. The events that resulted in use of force, point three-one percent, which I believe is So here's the breakdown. So with the fifty-three use of force, as I said, by type, compliance techniques, again, like the hand law, with twenty-five events, four people were put in, two people were arrested at taser point, and the taser was actually deployed four times. Then use of force, we work on, pointing guns, somebody we're calling, use of force, of course. That happened ten times, and I've worked those out because that's, those are the ones that people are gonna wanna know about. So it happened twice on a felony stolen vehicle stop. So when you're at the police academy, a felony vehicle stop is just that, it's somebody suspected of a felony, it's serious, and it's a, you're training in the police academy to do a felony vehicle stop, which involves using a firearm, pointing a firearm at people, leaving them out of the vehicle. So we've had building searches where firearms was pointed at twice, and stabbing, touch suspect, or just a blind-eyed person. That's a blunt call, whatever the firearm involved, not somebody with a firearm. We assisted runner in park, that person had a gun, so we made a gun in that situation. And unfortunately, we had a homicide, and that person that committed the homicide used a firearm, or was taken after the firearms were used as well. You see that, the taser was deployed four times. Unfortunately, guns were deployed, I say deployed, weren't fired, it was zero times, So use of force reviews, so I talked about GBI, great bodily injury, and you're like, what is that? That is, that's a serious injury. That's somebody that needs hospitalization. So that could be broken bones, or it could be, it could be, we're talking about the gun shop wound, or whatever, but a great bodily injury is just that, it has to be a serious So if it's, if we use force, like I said, like the, we use the taser, for example, nobody's injured, that's, that's less than GBI. So it's defined as any contact from no injury to some type of injury, less than great bodily injury. So typically, on those, the sergeants review the police report, the body count, and it could be just resolved there, unless the incident dictates further review of the report or body camera by me or the lieutenant. If the sergeant is questioning the use of force, if it was justified, then it will go to me and the lieutenant, and we'll, we'll take it from there. Well, if there's great bodily injury, both the reporter and the body camera's gonna be reviewed by me and lieutenant, and then we'll go from there, determine what, what an area of fact the incident happened, the next steps. So that gets to our level. So for serious use of force, and I'm talking fatalities or potential fatalities, we're talking, maybe somebody gets killed when they're in a pursuit, awaiting police officers, or maybe a police officer shoots somebody, so officer-involved shooting. So the reason I'm reading that top line to potential fatalities is because an officer could shoot somebody here in Sedona County, maybe they survive, they go to the hospital, but then they don't make it a few days later. So you have to treat officer-involved shooting as if it's a fatality for that reason. So this is a Sedona County Chiefs Protocol, Chiefs Association Protocol. So if we're gonna have, if a Thai police officer is involved in a critical incident, we'll just call it a shooting, officer-involved shooting. I would call, who was the sheriff, or the San Diego Police Chief at this time, those are the two agencies that are all assigned to, to do an investigation of this. And I would have those agencies or agencies independently uninvestigate the use of force shooting, which is basically a crime, right? Because if an officer's involved in shooting, then something happened to precipitate that, some kind of crime or attempt to arrest, so that needs to be investigated as a crime. That police investigation is turned over to the District Attorney's Office, criminal follow-up needed, and it's left to the District Attorney's Office to decide whether it's a justified shooting or not a justified shooting. And an officer could be charged by District Attorney in our county if they have either authority using deadly force. But then separately, Kattai Police Department, I would use a, I would use a professional P I or I A. So separately, I would have the I A conducted on whatever happened, put the officer on administrative leave, and the, the I A would be provided to me at some point. And it has to stay within the city of Kattai because I may have to discipline or terminate this police officer, which has nothing to do with the investigation on the, they're two separate, two separate things. So that's how that works. So there's some legislation, it's called RIPA, it's the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, Assembly Bill nine fifty-three. And what it's mandating is annual reporting of all stop and arrest information to the state attorney in general. It requires the reason for the stop, the time, the day and outcome, requires officer to record exclusive information such as speed ratios, gender, sexual and age, disability, primary language to understand connection between bias and policing. So most agencies in California, including all of the Sedona County agencies, were in wave four, so we're required to implement tracking by January first, twenty twenty-two. So the reason we're in wave four, wave one, for example, was LAPD, which is like ten thousand who are. They started it a couple of years ago, so did the higher control. And so, they're moving into bigger and bigger agencies, and we're in wave four, which is actually the last wave. So we will be mandated to collect this RIPA information. Then, this is, this is a recent legislation, this is Assembly Bill three ninety-two. This, this puts in black and white, when police officers can use deadly force, and all of these, all of these parameters have to be met. So it's gotta, it's gotta be necessary to prevent human life. Threat's gotta be imminent of death or serious bodily injury to an officer or another person. If there's a fleeing felon, it has to be a serious fleeing felon, a fleeing felon would have to be believed that they, they will harm somebody if not apprehended immediately. So an example could be somebody, suspect, with a weapon running toward a crowd of people, for example. So it has to be a serious fleeing felon. It emphasizes de-escalation, and alternative deadly force. Evaluation must include conduct of officer and the person up to use deadly force. So think about it, evaluation must include the conduct of the officer, right? So if you're a police officer, and there's somebody in a car, they start up the car, and they wanna leave, the police officer steps out into the road, that's the police officer's conduct, and it changes the outcome because he stepped out in the road and shot them. That will be taken into account eventually. So officers need to not put themselves in positions to use deadly force. It prohibits deadly force based on the danger of a person presents themselves, right? Well, a person could be a danger itself, we can't use deadly force on that, if it's not an officer or a heaven person. And three ninety-two is also in that package. And, believe it or not, the end of my presentation. So thank you, and Mayor, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Really appreciate you putting all that information together for everybody to see. So at this time, I will see if anybody on the council wishes to make any comments, and then I will open it up for public comment again, so. Hi, yes, Councilmember Landon.
Yeah, no comments at this time, just a quick question. I wanna clarify something from, and I wanna thank you, Chief, that was a very informative presentation. We usually have regular presentations through the chief, but I found it's very valuable. One thing I noticed, when you were laying out some very clear statistics on use of force, and you mentioned the number of times we had pointed, fortunately not deployed, but pointed weapons, guns, is that something we regularly track and document every time one of our officers, or in a position where they feel the need to, that they have to point a weapon, that we document that?
So if an officer has to point a weapon, I would expect a police report to be written on that, so yes, and that would be available for review. Now, if it's a, but if it's a building search, for example, and if we don't point a gun at, so if, if there's a burglary alarm call, an officer goes to a business and takes his weapon out, and ends up nobody's there, I wouldn't expect that to be documented, but if there was somebody there, for example, and they did point a weapon at him, arrest him, or point a weapon at him and find out that it was a business owner, that would be documented through a police report.
I would agree, that's what I expect, that if, anytime you employ a weapon like that, you're in a situation where you expect you might have to use it, act serious enough where you probably wanna document. Last question, just to confirm. So this is your expectation of our employees, I think that's great, I just wanna, is that spelled out clearly anywhere in our, in our manual? In my apologies, I've been through, but I don't remember that, and you suggested maybe we didn't, so I just wanna clarify that, Chief.
So the, the So the, the policy manual states that uses of force need to be, uh, reviewed, um, by a police superintendent.
Okay, and included in that definition is pointing a weapon is included as a use of force?
Oh, it's not that, no, it's not that specific.
Okay, thank you, that, that's good for now, thank you very much for that.
Councilman Delasso?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, really tonight, I think, um, for most of us on the council, all of us on the council and staff, we really do wanna hear from the public. Um, so I have no questions for the chief certainly at this point, um, but I really, I, I, I felt moved to say thank you for this presentation, and thank, you know, all the staff in the police department for not only helping and putting all of this information together, plus all of the handouts which have been posted to the city's website, um, but again, for, you know, the excellent work that you guys all do, and, um, as a community, we're gonna get through this, we're not, certainly not seeing issues like some of the large cities have seen, um, by any stretch of the imagination, um, but we're all interested in doing some fine tuning. So again, thanks to the chief and the police department and the rest of the city staff, and, um, here's looking forward to hearing from the public. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and I see, um, Councilmember Hart, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, yes, thank you, Chief Parish, for, um, that, um, very enlightening, uh, report, and, um, it was also good to have in the, um, meeting details beforehand the statistics, you know, for the last ten years. Um, I agree with Councilmember, um, Delasso, tonight, um, the most important part of this meeting will be, um, the listening section of it. I would, um, like to ask a question of you, you know, we talk about, um, if someone doesn't, um, mind, um, these rules and policies that there is, uh, possible discipline and, um, retraining, it would be, um, nice if you could kind of elaborate on that a little bit, you know, what does that entail, or what does that typically entail, um, so that people can get a sense of that. And, uh, that would be all from me, thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, uh, Councilman Harvey, uh, with, with, uh, police officer bill rights, if a, if a police officer engages in misconduct, which could, I know that's pretty vague, but we'll just use an example of, maybe, uh, a police officer is just rude and discourteous, a member of the public, for example, that's against policy. Um, we would, uh, conduct, uh, an internal affairs investigation if we thought it was serious, um, it rose to that level, we would assign an IA investigator to that, as the IA investigator would, uh, look at our policy manual, see what if policies are violated, um, that report would go to our police weekend, and the police lieutenant would make recommendations for disciplined need. So if it wasn't true of reasons, um, I could, uh, give them a, a letter of counseling, um, it could, they could be docked pay, but maybe not terminated. However, if the conduct continued, and there's another IA, true progressive discipline, uh, ultimately, we could dismiss police officer on the police report.
Okay, thank you, Chief, and then I also see, um, Vice Mayor Moore, if you wanna go ahead, please.
Hey, here, Mayor Schellman, uh, thank you, Chief Parish, um, I just had a couple of quick questions, um, on the RIPA training and the, um, implementation of that in January one of twenty twenty, you have to have it, is there anything to preclude the city of Khatari from having that training before then?
No, um, there's not, so, uh, it's nothing that stops a small agency, even though they're, they're not in the first one or two or three waves, uh, we are not, um, barred from participating in gathering RIPA information.
Thank you, and then the, the second question I had was on the duty to, uh, intervene. Um, can you elaborate on that just a little bit more?
Sure, so, um, if you, if so, if you had multiple police officers at a, at a call for service or responding to, um, like a volatile situation, and, um, say there's a suspect, say, uh, this is a burglary suspect, um, who's now in a car, and the police officers pull over, uh, the burglary suspect, and they go hands-on with him, and, and this person is really fighting the cops, um, if, if the, uh, cops start getting control of the suspect, um, and can take him into custody, um, and say maybe one of the other officers doesn't see that and keeps using force, maybe keeps, uh, maybe doing catan strikes on the individual, even though that now he's becoming compliant, an officer would have a duty to intervene on that officer, say, hey, stop, um, he's becoming compliant, you're going, you're going too far, you're using too much force, it's necessary to make this arrest. We have a duty to entertain, to intervene, and police officers are starting to overreact or use more force than, than is necessary for whatever the situation.
Uh, thank you very much, um, and at this point, um, I'm, would like to hear from the community and the participants as well, so thank you for that, and, uh, we'll, we'll come back.
Great, so yeah, I'll ask, um, our city clerk if he could look and see if any of the attendees, uh, would like to make comments.
Thank you, Mayor Schellman. For those of our attendees, just be sure to use the racing icon on your smart device or desktop, or dial star nine if you're just using your telephone. Listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number, and for the audible Zoom notification that you've been unmuted. Once you're, once you begin your public comment, you're three months in it to begin. John Browning?
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Great. My name is John Browning, and I am speaking on behalf of the Residence Group Khatari Organized Against Racism, CORE. We have collectively decided to focus our efforts on four main priorities that we asked the city of Khatari to address. A number of our members will be speaking tonight on these four priorities. One, we need independent civilian oversight for law enforcement to improve public engagement and assist with complaints such as use of force complaints and investigations. Two, we would like a formal survey to be conducted by the city of Khatari about racism and interactions with the Khatari Police Department. Three, we need to fast-track the collection of RIPA racial statistics ahead of the twenty twenty-two timeline mandated by the state. Four, to make these improvements, we ask that the city convene an ongoing working group, including members of the city council, police representatives, and members of the public, including our core team. Thank you.
My name is Adrian Lobby, I live in the Red Hill Apartment Complex off H Street. I speak to you as a member of CORE, Khatari Organized Against Racism. In the last week, our organization did a brief survey of racism and policing in Khatari. In just four days, people returned seventy-three surveys. There was enormous interest. Here's a bit of what we found. Council, I'm reading from the pie charts, which you have in front of you, and the percentages are routed to the nearest whole number. Question one, have you experienced racism in Khatari? White people? Occasionally, twenty-two percent. Black, indigenous, and people of color? Occasionally, fifty-three percent. Question two, what has your experience been with the Khatari Police Department? White people, negative experiences, only eight percent. Black, indigenous, and people of color, negative experiences, twenty-six percent. Have you experienced racial bias from the Khatari Police Department? White people, occasionally, five percent. Black, indigenous, and people of color, occasionally, twenty-two percent. Do you feel safe in Khatari? White people, not usually, only nine percent. But black, indigenous, and people of color feel not usually safe in Khatari, twenty-three percent say yes, not usually. In each of these measurements, black, indigenous, and people of color had a significantly more negative experience with Khatari, whether with other residents or with our police force. I think we can all agree that something is very wrong here. When we dialed into the comments, we found positive ones, like, I've lived in Khatari as a Latino student, Latina student in poverty all my life, I've never experienced or seen racism from the Khatari police. And then we had negative ones, like, we've watched two cops for hours waiting around to bust people for jaywalking, people talk about disbanding and just getting the sheriff. We'll be sending these comments to the council members and local media, but it's clear, we need a beloved community in Khatari. How do we build it? We uncovered at least two problems in this survey, just four days. One is cultural, due to mostly white people, some of them are ignorant or unkind, some of whom are downright prejudiced to Nats. The other is institutional, related to the police department, police officers, city laws and policy. To build a beloved Khatari, we need to tackle all of this. This is why CORE is asking for a city-sponsored formal survey, and for the formation of an ad hoc committee with two council members, members of CORE, and others, to break forward ideas for positive changes, and very importantly, to see that they're implemented. Thank you for listening.
Hi, um, well, first I wanna thank our, um, city council and Chief Parish for putting this together, or, um, and just the willingness to listen. Um, my name is Miranda London, Mandy London, and I'm both a resident of Khatari as well as a member of CORE. What I really wanna bring to the table right now are two main things. One, I wanna give a little bit of a reason why we initiated the survey regarding our community's experiences and also, our experiences with the police, and also just clearly state what we believe the shi, the city should do in response. The reason we created the survey in the first place was to get a sense of our own residents and what they're undergoing, feeling, and experiencing in regards to our local police, um, especially after George Floyd and the countless other heaps of deaths caused by police brutality, we wanted to see what was happening in our own backyard, so to speak. And basically, the results that Adrian had stated showed that we do have a problem with racial bias, and we, and I didn't mean we, as a community, as a city council, as a police department, and as individuals, really need to rectify the problem so that everyone can feel safe and protected in our own town. Our survey was pretty simple, it consisted of five main questions, asking about the personal experiences with the police, feelings of general safety, sound demographics, but what this survey really did was highlight the need for a better and more widely reached survey that we believe the city needs to either create, disperse, and monitor, or at the very least, assist us in this process. Um, and that really brings me to my second point, which is the main ask, and I just ask that the city officially supports and assists with that survey. And while this meeting in and of itself is a great first step, and, and I really appreciate that it's being held, it cannot end here. People have a right to be heard, and they have their experiences told and acted upon, and this kind of a survey, and this kind of a meeting is a perfect place to start that process. Ideally, I think we all want those voices to be heard, and we want them to be acted upon in finite, measurable ways. We need meetings like these, more of them, we need official surveys that aren't just done by, um, an amazing group of people like the CORE people are. Um, and really just a cooperation between the community members, the city council members, and our police departments act together, and I really appreciate, again, the willingness from Chief Parish to even have this kind of a meeting and discussion, and I hope this can be a stepping stone into something more, something that produces definitive and measurable results, like the survey that we're asking for, because I really think, I just think that we need a way to hold each other, our community members, our council members, our police officers, just each other accountable for what we say and do to enact change, and change happens when we work together, and just personally, I'm ready to work, so thank you so much.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great, hi, my name is Danielle Delario, y me llamo Daniela en español, soy maestra de español, I'm a Spanish teacher, I go by Daniela in Spanish, and I have been a Khatari resident for about ten years, I have two children, I have two teenage boys who are Ecuadorian, I lived in Ecuador a long time ago, and I'm also part of the group CORE, Khatari Organized Against Racism, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for organizing this meeting, and thank you to Chief Parish for that presentation. And, um, I also participated in surveying some Khatari residents. The other day, Adrian and I, um, went to some Spanish-speaking businesses, and we spoke to some business owners and workers in the area about their experience with racism and their interactions with the police. There seemed to be a general feeling of suspicion about why we were asking for this information, and one person even asked me if people would get in trouble if they said anything bad about the police. Um, that being said, no one said anything negative about their experiences. Um, the people I spoke with said that racism hadn't been a huge problem for them, however, a number had experienced racism from clients, um, and this is just a quote, um, I have occasionally experienced racism with customers, one time a customer was shocked when she found out I was the owner of my business, she seemed very angry, and said she couldn't understand how it was possible that I, a Hispanic man, was the owner, and, um, you know, I explained to her that I had worked hard for my, for what I do, and she never returned. So that's just one experience, um, and this was a survey, um, you know, we just went around for maybe just an hour, we got a lot of information. And so I do think that racism exists in Khatari, and I think we all need to do the work to be anti-racist. Um, luckily, there are a lot of great resources out there, and CORE, this group, we, we have a lot of great resources for city council members or for anyone else who's interested in, um, doing the work to educate themselves to be anti-racist. Um, lastly, I wanted to bring up a program called Kahoots that I spoke with city council member Mark Landman about briefly, thank you so much, Mark, for meeting with us. Um, as many of us would agree, police wear far too many hats. As Chief Parish stated, um, police are called in for mental health emergencies and domestic violence, which take a lot of time and resources. The Kahoots program is out of Eugene, Oregon, it's similar to the mobile support team that the chief mentioned, but much more extensive, it's been around for thirty-one years, and crisis workers respond to a wide range of mental health crises, um, they rely on trauma-informed de-escalation and harm reduction techniques, and I know I'm running out of time, but especially noteworthy is that, um, last year, out of twenty-four thousand calls, police backup was only requested one hundred and fifty times, and it saves the city of Eugene Springfield eight point five million dollars a year, so I'm hoping that MST could turn into something like Kahoots, because I think it would benefit us all, and thank you so much.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you so much for convening this meeting, I really appreciate everyone's time and how much preparation's gone into this. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of CORE, Khatari Organized Against Racism, and just to remind you of the four asks that our group was bringing to the meeting, was for the city to, um, work on a survey, uh, for us to convene a working group, including city councilors, and members of the public and the police, to, um, start a citizens, or a civilian oversight board of the police, and to fast-track the RIPA, um... oversight board of the police, and to fast-track the RIPA statistic collection. So, I'm going to use the rest of my time to talk about that last priority, which is the RIPA collection. I went out last week to the farmer's market to collect surveys, and I was only there for about twenty minutes, because I had another appointment. However, in that really short time, the second and the third person that I spoke to had both had a really sad, negative experience with the police, and I just wanted to read off what they said. The first one said, "Qatari police were unnecessarily aggressive towards people of color patrons in downtown. I had an instance where I was taking care of an intoxicated friend who was quietly stumbling, and they aggressively interrogated her and made us immediately feel unsafe for doing nothing wrong." And then the third person I spoke to said, "I have occasionally been followed by police, even if I haven't done anything, and it often feels like my car is targeted, once they see, especially targeted, once they see someone of color." So, I know that this was a quick survey, not super scientific, because we were just trying to get responses quickly, but if I can go to the farmer's market and find those two experiences literally within the first five minutes, then there's something going on. So, I would just really like to push for us to all collectively appeal to our sense of altruism when we're faced with this difficult information. It's hard to hear. We like to think of ourselves as a community that's not racist, and it's hard to hear that this is going on. But I think we all don't want to live in a town or in a city where people of color are three times as likely as white people to say they feel unsafe in our community. So, what can we do about it? Well, I would like the city to commit to fast-track the collection of Racial and Identification and Profiling, Racial and Identity Profiling Act statistic collection. I know that we're supposed to start collecting on January first, 2022. I would like us to commit to begin that on 2021. That would give us five months to figure out how to do it and get it up and running, and it would be, I mean, we really should have been collecting this data all along. I know the law was passed in 2015, but at least it would get us a little bit ahead of the game and be able to find out what's going on a little sooner. Okay, thank you very much.
Marjorie Krupp here.
Thank you. I want to share a comment from a neighbor of mine, who is also African-American, although I am her senior by several years. In 2017, and this is from the survey, I'm with CORE, and this is from the informal survey that we did with our neighbors in Qatari. Twenty seventeen, my friend and I like to go downtown Qatari, watch the people in costumes going from bar to bar. I'm assuming this was in October for Halloween. We were sitting on a bench, watching the many people in various costumes. The police came over and asked us what we are doing. We didn't have on any costumes. We said, "We're just looking at the costumes. We do this every year." They wanted to see some ID from us. We gave ID. Then, they want to know where you live, why you're here. We told them again. They called in the ID, then wanted to know, "Did we have alcohol?" They shined lights in our eyes. So, then I said, "You should be worried about Freddy Krueger and hatchet men." Other white people were sitting on benches with no costumes, doing the same as us. It was very humiliating. They kept us for twenty minutes. We never went downtown again. The other white people asked what happened. We told them, "We was just watching the costumes." They said, "We're doing the same." They didn't stop us. I said, "Because you're not black, guess you're the right color."
Merritt Weissman.
The mic is open.
Merritt, I'm going to appear that Merritt Weissman, they have dropped off somehow. Mel Brownie.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thank you for having this meeting. I'm a member of Qatari at CORE, Organized Against Racism. One of our asks is for civilian oversight of law enforcement with an independent entity. So, not just a name only, but an effective, independent entity to increase public safety. I'll mention just a few of the potential benefits of independent community oversight. Some of these are provided by the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. An example would be completants are given a place to voice concerns outside of the law enforcement agency. Oversight agencies can help improve the quality of the department's internal investigations of misconduct, and can help improve community relations by fostering communication. Agencies can also assist a jurisdiction in liability management and reduce the likelihood of costly litigation by identifying problems and proposing corrective measures before a lawsuit is filed. By establishing an oversight system, public officials are provided the opportunity to demonstrate their desire for increased police accountability and the need to eliminate misconduct. These are just a few of the possible benefits. Professor Dr. Adelord wrote for the Center of American Progress, quote, "Offending officers are rarely held accountable, and even law enforcement officers themselves acknowledge that they have few means to enforce accountability." In one survey from Pew Research, for example, only twenty-seven percent of police reported that poorly performing officers are held accountable. Existing internal mechanisms tend to be weakly enforced and are susceptible to bias. Police should not have the burden of so re-policing themselves. So, rather offending police should also be held accountable by civilian oversight boards that include some representatives from the communities these departments are supposed to serve. The key to this success, however, is the independence from law enforcement, which is necessary to ensure unbiased reviews of cases. I'm a professional with a license. I have to carry liability insurance, take exams, continuing education, abide by strict codes of ethics, and if folks want to lodge a complaint, they have to do so with, they can do so with an independent entity that investigates and reviews misconduct. This helps to improve overall public safety. It's imperative that we begin to implement true oversight and accountability for law enforcement, involving the community members that they serve. And I will end by saying, "Black lives matter."
Carol Williams.
Yes. My name is Carol Williams. I'm a resident of Qatari, and I'm a member of the group Qatari Organized Against Racism. We've heard from some of the survey responses, and I would like to read a response that we just received today from a black resident of Qatari. "Police harass me all the time, driving, walking, or biking. One time, they had me get out of a car at Starbucks. I fit the description of a man just tried to pass counterfeit at Oliver's. My grandson, granddaughter, was twelve years old. They were scared I was going to die. I hadn't been to Oliver's." That man that they were looking for was black. Another incident, smoking in front of my house. Police passed, turned around, came to my door, asked me, "What am I doing out here?" I said, "Smoking sick." He told me, "Put your hands behind your back. I'm saying for what?" He said, "You resisting arrest." I fell down. He put his knee on my back. I yelled for my wife. She opened the door when she saw my face down on the sidewalk. She told, "Police, get off him. He got back problems." He put me in cuffs. I sat in front of the police car. He called in. He said, "Bet you're going to get some warrants or something." Then, he asked me all kinds of questions. Then, he called for backup. "What for? I'm in handcuffs." Other police said, "You want me to tase him?" They laughed. And the one police said, "What can we charge him with?" Finally, they uncuffed me. They left. My daughter came to see what was going on. The cops had stopped a guy who wasn't black, who was a Mexican guy. My daughter walked up the street to ask the police, "Why are you harassing my dad?" My daughter was twenty-eight years old at the time. She said, "The cops said, 'Get out of here now.'" So, she came back. Her, me, and her mom were standing in front of the house, talking. The same police came racing back fast to the house. He called me to the car. He said, "Hands behind your back." I was handcuffed again. Then, he wrote a ticket for me to appear in court, and he said I was disturbing the peace and resisting arrest. I appeared in court. Public defenders said, "Plead guilty." I refused to be guilty. I've done nothing. The defender informs me, "If I don't plead guilty, I will go to jail." This is what happens every day to black people, so many in prison led on by police, prosecutors, and judges. We black people still suffering every day. We know all lives matter, but black lives matter too. I could write lots of incidents, too painful. All the police are not bad, but it's the ones that mistreat people that make it bad for the others. I don't really feel safe in Qatari, Santa Rosa, anywhere where the police are present.
Merritt Weissman.
Hi. Is it time you can hear me?
Hi, yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Merritt Weissman. I moved in Qatari, but I've only been here a few months. However, I also work at Sonoma State University, and I attended Roderick Parks' listening session today in my professional role. And one of the things that was different about that from this is that the city kept, the city of Roderick Parks kept asking the attendees what they should do differently, and the attendees didn't have any answers. But we actually do have at least part of the solution, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about the program that Danielle talked about called CAHOOTS. CAHOOTS started in the city of Eugene, Oregon. It's an innovative, community-based, public safety system to provide mental health first response for crises involving mental illness, homelessness, and addiction. The White Bird Clinic launched CAHOOTS, which is an acronym for Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Streets, as a community policing initiative way back in 1989. The CAHOOTS model has been in the spotlight recently as our nation struggles to reimagine public safety. The program mobilizes two-person teams consisting of a medic. The medic might be a nurse, a paramedic, or an EMT, and the second person is a crisis worker who has substantial training and experience in the mental health field. The CAHOOTS teams deal with a wide range of mental health-related crises, including conflict resolution, welfare checks, substance abuse, suicide threats, and more. They rely on trauma-informed de-escalation and harm reduction techniques. CAHOOTS staff are not law enforcement officers and do not carry weapons. Their training and experience are the tools they use to ensure a nonviolent resolution of crisis situations. They also handle non-emergent medical issues, non-emergency medical issues, avoiding costly ambulance transport and emergency room treatment. Danielle spoke a bit about the cost savings to the city, so I'm not going to repeat that. Instead, I'm going to say, "Black lives matter," and I'm proud to be a member of CORE.
Phil Proudie.
Hi, I'd just like to, again, echo the need for some independent oversight of law enforcement. When we try to look into use-of-force complaints, such as specifically the one in the civil suit by Christopher Alcala against the city of Qatari, so far, indications have been that no records exist in terms of the police disciplinary measures potentially in that case and records pertaining to the case. Those records should be available under State Bill 1421, which states that any records can be made available to the public in a use-of-force case where great bodily injury was caused. And I think we can all agree that this occurred in the incident in downtown Qatari, where this young man, Sonoma State student, was hospitalized twice from injuries sustained during an encounter with members of the Qatari police. I just want to say that not a lot of transparency is available when looking into the police, and think Community Advisory Committee could help in these respects. Thank you. Black lives matter.
First, go ahead. No more hands raised. Okay, thank you so much, everybody, for your input and your thoughts in how we can move forward under the situation. And I apologize in advance, my dog is getting vocal, so hopefully he won't participate too much. So, let me bring it back to council first. So, I see Councilmember DeLasseur. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skellington. I too want to say that black lives do matter, and by saying, "Black lives matter," I know a lot of people seem slightly offended and really want to say, "But all lives matter." But when you're saying, "Black lives matter," all lives do matter. And right now, when I hear stories like this hitting home, from what Ms. Williams was saying, the person that she had interviewed, it's very troubling for me to hear that kind of activity. And to the CORE group, I have a question that I don't need an answer to tonight, and you can certainly contact me after this meeting and offline, because many of you have. I'm wondering if you gathered data when you were interviewing people of a timeframe? Did a specific incident occur in the last two to three years, like ten years? And the only reason I'm asking that is I believe we've had a change in personnel at the police department, and also a change in our leadership when Chief Parish came on almost ten years ago. Chief, that is true. So, anyway, that's just a question I have out there that I've been thinking about once I looked at those pie charts before the meeting. I do want to say, though, that I'm really troubled to hear these kinds of statements, of things that have occurred potentially from our police officers, whether they're still on our force or whether they're gone. It's just, it's troublesome in a big way. And I know a couple of times it's come up about the RIPA numbers, and Chief, again, these are answers we're going to try to have for the public once this meeting is over and we can sort of absorb everything that we've heard tonight. But is it possible, if we do have some of these statistics, that that could be implemented any sooner than January one of 2022, I believe you said?
I believe so. So, Councilman Moore asked if there was a, like, a legal restriction. There's not. It's a matter of software and how to do that, and we don't have that currently. Doesn't mean we can't get there, though.
Sure. No, thank you for that. I think that's going to definitely be a follow-up question, so I know you're going to start to look into it and see what can be done, make sure that from a legal perspective, I can't imagine implementing something sooner would be illegal. That sounds almost ridiculous. It does sound ridiculous. So, yeah, let's just see what information you could gather and bring back to us. And yet, at the same time, when I look at the statistics that you had put in your presentation, Chief, you know, we had essentially seventeen thousand events in 2019, where I believe you said we had four complaints, and, you know, three of them were essentially dismissed or dropped. And so, we actually had one complaint where, whatever that complaint is, I don't need to know about it right here with the details, but that the individual was disciplined and further training had been given. So, and I think, you know, I think- So, um, and I think, you know, I think first and foremost, we are not all perfect. We do make mistakes. And when those mistakes are made, unlike from people, let's just say back in Washington DC, it's really human to admit that you made a mistake and, and fess up to what you've done that is wrong. And let's move forward in a more positive direction. So, um, again, with that, uh, I'm emphatic when I say Black Lives Matter. Um, I'm also just as emphatic when I say I am really troubled to hear of how people of color, um, in maybe some small instances, but regardless, you know, have been treated. And I think, um, I think we need to look at that in a little bit more detail and make improvements on that. So for now, Madam Mayor, I thank you for the time, and I'll seat it back to you.
Thank you. And I see, um, Councilmember Harvey has her hand up. So go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, along the same lines, um, on the RIPA, what would be nice, um, Chief Parrish and Damian, um, when we come back is what, what would it take for us to get there sooner? So I think that that would be, um, help for us, helpful for us to know, you know, it, it, you know, what kind of funding, what kind of timeline, how fast we could get the software, what would it take to train, you know, what would it take for us to get there? Um, and, um, there's some really good ideas, um, from the Core Group. I would certainly like to, um, understand a little bit more about, um, possible oversight models. You know, where have they worked? What ones worked? What didn't work? How were they funded? What were their authorities? You know, I, I would like to understand more, um, about that. I like the idea, um, of a survey. And I think that one of the speakers said, you know, that this was just put together by a few folks, that it wasn't scientific, and maybe we need to do a more thorough, uh, survey. So I would like to understand what it would take for us to, um, probably engage, um, an outside, uh, company to help, as they usually do with most of our surveys. And, uh, would like to hear and understand a little bit more about what a working group, you know, maybe we might be able to have a council, um, subcommittee put together to work on some of these, you know, what would, uh, independent, um, oversight look like? Um, and things like that. And, and what do we need from some of these other things? And I agree with, uh, Councilmember Delasso, some of these stories are, are a little bit, um, hard to hear. And unfortunately, they've been going on for, for way, way, way too long, not only in our community, but in communities all over the United States. And I think that we're just at a point in, in our whole country where, you know, I, I, I think people are really feeling like enough is enough. And I do really, really appreciate that this group, uh, as was pointed out, they're, they're trying to help with solutions, not just saying, you know, here, counsel, here's the problem, and put it at our feet. And, you know, say, um, you know, it's yours, take care of it. So I really appreciate, um, the thought that they, um, have put into that. And with that, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And, um, I also see Councilmember Lemon has your hand up. So go ahead, Councilmember Lemon.
Well, I try not to get Anubis going too much there, Madam Mayor, but, uh, we'll see what we can do. But I just wanted to start off by thanking everybody, all the members of the public, all the members of our Core Group, um, and our chief and staff for putting this together and making the time to be part of this. And of course, thank our officers for what they do every single day in this town. Um, I wanted to start with a question first for staff, and I have some requests for things I'd like to seek to come back to our next meeting, fleshed out by staff, perhaps. But first, I just wanted to ask regarding the discussion about CAHOOTS, uh, which I agree, I was unaware of this before. And it is best described, it's kind of like the grown-up ideal version of MST. Uh, it, uh, just like our officers here in Cataná love MST. It appears that the officers in Eugene Springfield really love CAHOOTS, most notably because it doesn't require them to respond or keep them out of service either. So it actually really is a pretty powerful tool. Um, and so what I wanted to ask is, you might have a better sense of where the county is going with their potential mental health, uh, piece for the upcoming election? I'm curious if there's anything in there specifically to improve, fund, increase MST? Because that seems like something that could be, with just some funding, could get us to a better place. I know CAHOOTS, I'm told, is a community roughly the size of Santa Rosa, and I think they have roughly about a $2 million annual budget. To extrapolate that for the county, maybe at a low level, you could get by with doubling that? I don't know. But it's kind of a striking distance sort of thing. So is there anything contained in improving MST first?
Um, I, I can take a shot at that, chief. So my understanding, I haven't, um, I haven't heard any, not that I would necessarily know, um, at this level, but I haven't heard any discussion about redesigning MST, but I have heard discussion about mental health services measure, um, being used in part to expand the availability of the MST program. So expanding the hours and times, days.
Well, that's a good first step. I, I like that. Thank you. So that, that's perhaps something we can get behind and push for. So if you, just general request for staff to look into areas of interest, uh, I wonder if, if, if there's some ideal method for police employees to anonymously report some, something serious, uh, that they find problematic behaviors, uh, a whistleblower-like function? It seems we have that in military, the paramilitary organization. It might be something that would be useful for us to have. Uh, how that would play out, I don't know clearly. It would be something that allows to report anonymously, directly to the top of the management. Uh, secondly, I think we have really good formal community contact with all the programs that have been mentioned, Coffee with the Cop, and National Light Out, the HOA meetings, and others, and in particular, social media. But I would love to see if there's any proposals that could come back that could increase our informal community contact, uh, the real conversation with public during shifts. So our public works is really, really good at this. I see that all the time, particularly pre-COVID, a little less of it now. And it's the nature of the job. They're out there in the public in a place where the public can walk by and see them and talk to them. And so it's obviously a little harder for the DD. But I think that's one area that we could give some benefit. If there's a way to further leverage that a little bit in our off-neighborhood program, I think that would be great. Uh, I've been beaten to the punch repeatedly asking about RIPA. I think that's a great idea. Uh, it's, it struck me that if we're only a year away, why don't we do it? Because it strikes me that the data contained therein will answer a lot of questions and give us a lot of clarity about how we're doing. So I, I, I think there's nothing to be worried about about. As a matter of fact, I think we would welcome. And mostly, I want to thank the chief again for his closeness to this, which I've noted once again tonight. I, I think the community should note that and appreciate it. This isn't all, this doesn't always happen, in my experience. Um, I will jump back to the use-of-force procedure about pointing a weapon. I'm glad to hear that we tell people to document it, but it should be written down somewhere in our policy. It shouldn't be just a general thing. My sense from talking with the chiefs, our back and forth, was that we don't have that documented. I think I'd like to see if it's possible to document that without upsetting the apple heart too much, because I think that just needs to be there. It's the best practice. Related to that, I, I'd like to know with more clarity when we come back next time, exactly what the impact would be, or if there would be any impact, um, from hybridizing some of our LexiPaul procedures, if we feel the need to. I'm not interested in getting into a big public word-smapping session on it, but some things, for example, adding reporting requirements, for pointing a weapon, would be something I'd like to see us do. Uh, so I'd like to know if that's really a problem. Uh, I understand there's a concern about liability, but I also understand, under LexiPaul's terms and conditions, they don't stand behind their policies in court cases. They protect agencies from lawsuits by being up to date with latest decisions in legislation. But their terms and conditions specify they're not liable for policy. So I'm not sure how much of a protection that really is court-wise, as long as it's looked over by a capable attorney, if any changes. Um, and lastly, just in general, I'd really like to see some recommendations come back for various ways we might look at improving oversight regarding police issues, actions, disciplinary problems. Um, now, I, I do feel we're all civilians. You're city council, we're elected to actually provide this oversight. But this is one area that is, because naturally, because of, uh, employee privacy laws, has been somewhat opaque to us. Uh, and so I'm not saying that I see that there's a problem, but I do think we have the opportunity to further improve this. Um, and I find that as an elected official responsible for oversight for the entire staff at City Hall, for the public, um, if I have a limited view into something, that's difficult because I have a responsibility, but I don't have the tools to really fully do that responsibility. So that might be an area, if there's a way to improve that, working in a city manager city, which we do, very good system, by the way, in my feeling, um, I'd like to see what we could come back with. So sorry for the long list, but it's an important evening. And, and those are the things that jump to mind, at least. And I would be supportive also of a survey. I think that wouldn't be necessarily a bad idea. I'd like something that wasn't self-selecting, that was more modern, and, uh, that we could use as, as a benchmark and occasionally revisit that at a certain times, whether that's annually, biannually, or something like that. Just track and see how we're doing. And I think that ties in real nicely with the RIPA reporting. So that's what, uh, I'd like to see if possible. If there's anything that's, can come back out of that that would be useful, I'd love to hear about it. And thank you, Anubis, for letting me get through that.
Councilman Lemon, it's the chief. I, I have a, I wanted to, uh, add a couple things.
Please.
Um, so one, um, with the ballot, the potential ballot major we talked about, it's not just mental health, it's, it's also for homelessness, also for unchilled people. Uh, I did, I do want to share that, um, I'm sure that the, the chief's association, so the, the Sonoma County Law Enforcement Chief Association, which is the sheriff and all the police chief. I'm sure we're gonna be asking that question at some point as an association of MST expansion. I'd like to see council ask, ask those questions as well. Um, I sincerely believe that expanding MST will benefit, um, Cataná and just the county in general. Um, and then, I apologize, so on the, on the point, uh, the plan of a weapon, it's what he, I misunderstood. I thought you were asking if it was flagged somehow, like through software, like RIPA. It is not. However, it's gonna generate a police report, uh, would generate a police report, which would get reviewed by a supervisor for its approval.
So that is something we have then in our, in rules, regulations, our policy manual, somewhere that makes it clear that's required in any circumstance where a weapon's pointed. That goes into the report?
Yeah. Have it's use of force.
Good. That's what I would expect, and I just wanted to clarify. And I, I, I'm really glad to hear that. So thank you for helping me get that straight, chief. That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, and I see Vice Mayor Moore. You've got your hand up, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skellman. Um, I don't necessarily want to be redundant, um, but I will start off that over the years, we've been, over the last probably five or six years, we've been working with Chief Parrish and, um, suggesting greater outreach and engagement in the community. And chief has taken up that mantle and done a very good job on that. Um, along with that, and the engagement is an educational component. And I think that, as evidenced currently and in our community, um, you know, racism is based on ignorance, and it's a learned behavior. So as we continue to, to do outreach and, and engage with the community, it's an educational component that I think we need to, to put out there as far as teaching anti-racism. I've witnessed racism here in the community myself and have stepped up and said things. Um, but it's something that we need to continue to do. So, um, I would support the four components of the four ideals. I think that they're good. Um, we did used to have our, uh, community or police advisory commission. I would support a, some sort of version of that with oversight. And I think having, uh, a commissioner committee like that with, um, all the affected parties participating in that, um, does lend a certain level of transparency to that. And it does, uh, also lend a level of, um, responsibility. So I, I'm definitely in support of all of those and look forward to what we come up with moving forward down the road. So I thank you all, uh, participants and staff and, uh, fellow councilmembers for, for this meeting. I think it's, it's great, and it, um, it's something to move forward with in a positive direction and an enlightenment, so to speak. Thank you.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Delasso. Do you just have a quick comment?
I do. I apologize, but thank you for the opportunity. Um, if I didn't make this clear, I just wanted to say this. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at, um, mostly tonight, scrutinizing the police department and, um, tactics and techniques that have been used. Um, but I also want to say that certainly from the council level, and I would assume we're all citizens, um, all of the citizens who spoke tonight and who are listening also care about the safety of our police officers. You know, if you've never been through the adrenaline rush of a, um, law enforcement training, I have had that opportunity over the years with Park Service, um, I will say that it just takes on a very different feeling. That is not to say that when you wear a badge, you're allowed to do anything. I'm not going anywhere near that. I just want to make it clear that we do care about our police department and, um, the dangerous situations that they are put in frequently. So I just, there was a point I thought I had made. I wasn't clear if I did. Now I did. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, thank you. Um, so I just want to say, um, in closing, I, I hope everybody got a chance to speak that wanted to understand. This is just the first meeting. So if you wish to make comments at the next meeting, obviously, you're, you're welcome to do that. If for some reason you're uncomfortable speaking in this type of forum, you're welcome to submit, uh, comments in writing. And that does, yeah, get shared with all of us, um, on the councils, whereas, as well as staff. So there are many opportunities to make sure your voice is heard. And I just want to make that really clear tonight. We've, we really wanted to be in sort of a listening position. Uh, we've all taken copious notes. We have a lot to digest. Thank you very much for the presentations with the information. Uh, thank you, chief, for putting together your presentation as well just to help educate and give us a little bit more background about, um, our local police department. Um, and we are gonna be planning a future meeting so that we can delve further into the issues that, um, have been raised here tonight. And there have been a lot. And, uh, just to echo what my fellow councilmembers have said, I definitely do appreciate, uh, the community members, uh, the core members especially, too, of their, their forethought and, and suggestions of possible solutions and giving us different ideas and, and, uh, information we can pull from to try to move forward and come up with some solutions. So thank you very much, everyone, for your time tonight. Um, and again, uh, we'll be planning a future meeting, so don't feel like this is your last chance to be heard. So with that, I will say thank you again to everyone. And we will adjourn the meeting, uh, at 8:21 PM. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you guys at the next meeting.